So, uh, we have a student ambassador. Can you send the pledge of allegiance quick? The United States of America, which stands one nation, one God, individual liberty and justice for all. Alright, thank you. Alright, so, uh, public comment, do you have any public comments? No, or reporting soon? Good. Alright, correspondence from Board of Education, I have none. Uh, report from student ambassadors.
Good evening. My, whoa. Good evening, my name is Natalie Vane, your eighth grade student ambassador for this year. Tonight I'll be sharing what I've been working on in my classes for the past couple of weeks. In ELA, we've been working on adjectives and pronouns and also nouns. And a series of books, working on reading comprehension. In math, we have been working on Pythagorean theorem. In social studies, we've been work, we've been learning about the first Thanksgiving and pilgrims. In Spanish, we've been working on a sports unit and a series of adjectives. In science, we've been working on speed, velocity and acceleration. And tonight we had a senior night for the eighth grade, um, soccer team. And there's nothing, any really big coming up, so, thank you. Um, we lost three to four.
Good job, thanks.
Yeah, that was good. And so I'd like to welcome Laura Poza up, uh, she's our sixth grade student ambassadors. We do have a seventh grade and they're supposed to start, um, next month, so, Laura?
Hi, my name is Laura Reposo and I'm a sixth grader here at LCS. Here are, here's what we are working on in our classes. In language arts, we are learning twenty new wordly wise words and we are reading number of stars. In social studies, we are learning about the Persian em- empire. In science, we are learning about Lyme disease and ticks. In math, we are learning about dividing decimals by decimals. We are also starting our pasta fundraiser for our new, our New York City trip.
Alright, uh, so I'm gonna go back here.
Yeah, read it.
Correspondence.
Yeah.
Alright, so, anybody hear me? So I received this email tonight at six twelve PM. It says, "All," it is, this is from Brandy Larkin. She's a board member, or was a board member. "It is with heavy heart that I submit my resignation from the Lisbon Board of Education effective immediately. The decision has not been made lightly, however, the contention and divisiveness that exists within the board itself and between the board and the administration have made it increasingly difficult to serve effectively. The administration's unwillingness to genuinely hear, genuinely hear from all board members and to consider the diverse perspectives has, has further contributed to a fractured and unproductive environment. The lack of unity within the Board of Education has, in my view, enabled and perpetuated a hostile relationship between the superintendent and the community. Rather than working collaboratively towards solutions to serve students, teachers and families, the board's internal conflict and the administration's selective engagement have created an atmosphere of distrust and discouragement. I believe that serving on the Board of Education should be grounded in shared commitment, open communication and mutual respect, all centered on the best interests of our students and our educators. Unfortunately, I no longer feel that these principles are being upheld consistently within the current culture. While I remain deeply committed to the public education and the success of our district, I believe I can best continue to support our students and community outside of this role. It is my sincere hope that the board and the administration will find a way to rebuild trust, unity and transparency moving forward. I thank the community for the opportunity to have served. I continue to hold deep respect for the dedicated educator staff and families who give so much to our school every day." Brandy Larkin, Board of Ed. Alright, so that's her email, I don't agree with it, but I read it. Okay, um, onward.
Okay.
Approval of minutes. Three other minutes from the September fifteenth Board of Ed meeting, anybody got any questions or comments? No, I need a motion to, oh, go ahead, did.
As usual, the vast majority of motions that were presented were passed in unanimous nature, other than just one.
Yep.
With the rare exception of the exceeding majority of things that have been proposed and modified over the last minute.
Just now.
Oh, I see what he's doing.
I will also state that I'll, I am disappointed that the motion did not carry for Ellis Tech to be added, so. We don't have to, I just.
Okay. Well, I appreciate that, Beanie. Alright, uh, any other discussion? So, we need a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
One second?
Lauren, seconds. Alls in favor? Opposed? Alright, motion carries.
Okay.
Alright, administrative reports, Mr. Sheldon.
Good evening, everybody. So first, I'd like to, page here, announce the September Students of the Month. Congratulations to Owen Relitz, Liliana Spencer, Elias Roducci, Grayson Supliki, Wesley Pope, Matthew Broschu, Giovanni Muccio, Aro Dupre and Jiun Tam. Nice job, all you students, for exemplifying the core values of cougar pride, respect, responsibility, safety and trustworthiness. Our, um, pre-K through grade five students attended the Lisbon Firehouse as part of, uh, Fire Prevention Week. It did rain, so we did have to postpone our grade two, but we are rescheduling. Uh, thank you to Chris Labonte, uh, for organizing this, Chief Gifford, as well as the Lisbon Fire staff. Um, also would like to just bring to the board that, um, our Assistant Principal Kelly Blaine, along with Shelley Ipperson and Brian Ipperson, uh, attended a reading, um, PD called ReadCon two point O. Uh, they had a great time, um, it's actually spearheading some of our PD that we're gonna be doing throughout the year. So I just wanted to bring that to the board's attention. And that's all I have to report.
Alright, thank you, any questions, Mr. Sheldon? Nope. Okay, uh, Mr. Furk.
Good evening, everybody. I'm just gonna report on the numbers as they currently stand right now. Uh, our eligibility rate right now at Lisbon Central School is ninety-five, so we had, uh, one that was just recently found eligible. And then we had another student move into the district. Um, at Griswold High School, um, we had a student move out of there, so we, um, had one number down from that one, from this one. Um, so our total lies at one twenty-four at the current time. Any questions?
I have none. Anybody else have any questions? Alright, thank you. Alright, uh, Mr. Paradise.
I was gonna do seed, can I interrupt for a minute?
Yeah.
Did you wanna do seed now?
Yeah, I didn't know if that, if we're ready for that yet, I know it's, it's next in the packet, but, okay. So we can, I was just gonna go over and review, uh, the seed grant that had recently, uh, passed through legis- legislation and, uh, at the state level. Um, which is part of Public Act twenty-five dash sixty-seven. And, uh, it stands for the Special Education Expansion and Development Grant. Um, it's a little, so they, they started, uh, allocating funds to districts already. Um, and, um, really the application process hasn't even been developed yet, so they, you know, so they, they're not wasting any time getting the money out yet. Um, uh, but this was something that was established this year. And, um, it's really used to reform, um, better funding, uh, for special education services. So some of the, um, you know, really, some of the, some of the, the uses for this, um, are like, things that, uh, coincide with the direct provisions of special education services. Um, tier-two interventions, um, paying salaries and hiring staff. And purchase and maintenance of curriculum, equipment and other things. Uh, what it does not cover are, um, operations, um, not specifically tied to special education needs. Um, and it really can't supplant existing special education funds. So it's really just to supplement existing programs right now. Um, and it's looked, our district is looking to receive about twenty-nine thousand dollars. Um, twenty-nine, six thirty was the figure that they had sent us. So, not bad, and this is just basically, uh, a fraction of what we're supposed to receive in the future. Uh, so there really is a hundred and ninety million dollars, uh, that the state is, or is expecting to receive. However, they're only, um, they're only putting thirty million aside right now for this year. Um, and that's gonna be distributed, um, across districts in the state. Um, so depending, you know, right now we're, I think districts are, are receiving about fifteen point seven percent of that thirty million per district. And ours comes out to about twenty. Was a nice little, a little, uh, little bonus for us, so. Nice.
And he's gonna, we're gonna address something later on the agenda, okay?
That's right.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Um, Business Manager, Mr. Paradise.
Hi, everyone. Um, so this month, uh, I've been working on the, on the audit, uh, the audit is taking place in person, November fourth and fifth. They'll be at the town hall first on the fourth and then here with, uh, me on the fifth. Uh, they've requested about thirty-seven documents, reports, et cetera, uh, have just about all of them to them and ready to go, just finalized in the last few ones, um, and we should be geared up and ready for the audit. I worked with, um, the special department with Dan DeWinda, uh, this month to prepare the excess cost report and submission to the state. Um, last year we missed that December one deadline unfortunately, but we are ready, uh, to submit almost now. Um, the document is prepared, all the, we've, we've outlined thirteen students that we're tracking. Um, and the spreadsheet and the workbook is all set up, um, with those students and ready to go with their, their, um, bills to date and the projections throughout, throughout June, so. Um, I feel good that we are much, uh, far ahead of the curve than we were last year, which is nice. Um, I attended a workshop with Casbo, um, just this past month and, um, it, it was, it was a really good workshop. Um, there was a presentation by the, uh, State Department of Education, which is really good, uh, they spoke about the seed grant and the funding and how it broke down. Um, Shipman DeGeevan was there and presented on the new federal overtime law that went into place that we have to implement by, uh, the end of this fiscal year for the W-2 is upcoming. Um, and then also, uh, Novus, uh, was actually there presenting on AI and how to use it within, um, the, the, the job, if you will. And with a focus actually on RFPs and how to break them down, uh, it was very interesting. Um, and the RFP process is actually going very well. Um, we've received, I wanna say, six different vendors have reached out multiple times. We keep updating the questions, we have about three pages of questions and answers and responses. Yeah, so thank you to Elaine and Megan, uh, for constantly updating the town's website and the, um, our website. Um, we got it on the state's, uh, website and I think that's really led to the boom and, um, you know, vendors seeing it, um, and responding, so. We'll find out, um, in two weeks, uh, how, how we make out, but. And then lastly, um, October first was a new, uh, law was introduced in the state, uh, where for the first time, uh, boards of educations are no longer exempt from having employees participate in the Connecticut FMLA and paid leave, um, law. So we have to, through payroll, had to add a brand new deduction, uh, assign, all the staff were, uh, labeled non-certified staff according to like the chapter one sixty-six of the SDE. So, um, we identified all those staff, assigned all the deductions to them and then the first payroll went through, went through, we're taking that deduction, so. It was, uh, quite the big project for, within payroll and, um, rolled that out, so. We've been busy and we'll, we'll keep you busy.
You did a good job, though.
Thank you.
So when do we open a bid, uh, when do we open, uh, bids for that?
Oh, November thirty-three PM. Yep.
Okay. Good. Alright, any questions, Mr. Paradise? Alright, Mr. Maglu?
Hello, just a couple of updates for you, uh, last week we had our six-month, uh, asbestos inspection. Um, Brooks Environmental was in and they found no issue, excuse me, no issues during this inspection. Um, I know Sal mentioned this next item about the hot water heater too, um, currently getting prices and I've got two quotes so far, the lowest is twenty thousand and so far the highest has been about thirty-five thousand. So, gotta get one more and we'll proceed forward, but we definitely have a hot water heater downstairs with a little bit of a leak in it.
How much was yesterday?
Uh, one came back at twenty thousand and the other one is at thirty-five.
It's up there.
Yep.
I know.
Unfortunately, this one feeds the kitchen, so. But, and that's all I have.
Wow.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we gotta go to the town for that, or are we gonna pay it out of our budget?
I gotta talk to Jonathan and see if we can't finagle some stuff on him.
Yeah. Wow.
Fun.
Alright, thanks, any questions, Mr. Maglu?
Thank you.
No? Alright, last but not least, Mr. Keating.
Thank you. Uh, the all-hazard safety and security plan, uh, will be finalized tomorrow. Um, I'm sorry, I'm a little hoarse, um, I swallowed a pill the wrong way, it got stuck, so, but, I'm fine now. I'm just a little sore throat, um, but it's being sent out, uh, this week to all the committee members. Uh, based upon feedback, you know, the revisions are done. Um, Brian will then, Brian will, will then get sign-offs from local authorities and it'll be sent to the federal authorities on time, so we're happy about that. Just so you know, we did hold an evacuation drill this past week and we had Trooper Adams, um, help us with it. And, uh, it went well, staff and students, uh, did the right thing, went to the Newt Meeting House, for those of you who might not know. Uh, but it went very well, honestly, so we were happy. Uh, the POCD open house, the Planning Constitution Development, um, Committee, they asked us to go down, they had an open house, Brian went, Jonathan and I. Um, they were so pleased to have us there, it was, it was just so great. Um, it was very nicely organized, they had charts up and they had goals and strategies and themes and all kinds of stuff. So, um, I, I talked to, uh, a couple of them and said, uh, geez, it's so nice, they said, oh, you haven't even seen the school system one yet. I went, oh! So we went around and we were mentioned under the maintenance and provision of municipal facilities. Um, and it was regarding the science lab update and the HVAC project. And why this was a big deal, they said, they're realizing more and more that grants are saying, is this in the town's plan? So they said, now you can just give them this. I said, oh geez, thanks a lot. Um, so we, we were happy and I think, uh, the pizza was good and the fruit and all the desserts, so we kinda chowed down too. But, anyway. Uh, collaboration with districts, excuse me. The goal this year is to collaborate even more than ever before with the high schools, um, um, for example, Griswold High School and NFA have meetings for sending districts. Um, always, someone from our team goes. If I can't make it, I will ask someone else to do it. And, um, the team's been great about it. We're also collaborating with the rural, well, I am, with the rural districts. And the first topic is, uh, transportation, they did ask me to join them, I think I put that in the newsletter to you all, but, uh, if I didn't, I apologize, but I think I did. Um, and I said, yeah, I'm in, uh, so let's start meeting. Uh, Jack from Bosser is, this, Jack from Bosser is the one who's leading it. Anyway, the first thing that we wanna do is look at transportation routes. So, I can't take the credit for this because you all know me with my directionality, um, kinda like disability, so Jonathan did this for, for me. And, uh, it was all sent, it's all the superintendents now are sending them in. Like, what do our routes look like and if they overlap, can we do something in terms of sharing buses, um, and then costs? So that's just one example and I'll keep you updated. And that's the end of my report.
Great.
Okay.
Thank you. Any questions, Mr. Keating? Alright, uh, let's go to the consent agenda, approval of monthly expenditures. So we need a motion, um. Need a motion to approve expenditures for September twenty-twenty-five, fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, in the amount of one million one hundred and ninety-nine thousand one hundred and sixty-seven dollars and sixty-four cents.
Is that motion?
Lauren, second, Katie, seconds. Any discussion? Any questions? Alright, alls in favor? Aye, opposed? Alright, now we need a motion to approve the financial statement for September twenty-twenty-five, fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, as presented by the administration.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, motion carries. Alright, so we have a presentation tonight, long-awaited presentation, right, Kate?
Yes.
From Cave. Um, so, uh, if we can give them our undivided attention, it'd be great.
It is a long-awaited, we, uh, we had some, you know, few, with board members missing and my concussion this summer, um, so we're here now, um, and we're, well, really glad to be here. Um, I just wanna open and just talk, because now you've had a resignation and that, listening to the email was, you know, pretty eye-opening, I guess, for everybody, maybe for, you know, not realizing how one of your board members felt. Um, board governance is what Cave does best, what we do to professionally develop, um, boards. Um, it means that, um, you're collaborating, you're, you know, listening to each other, you're having, um, vigorous discussions and, you know, voting the best ideas forward. Um, we do so many different things for boards as, um, as, as the, you know, uh, the organization that connects fourteen hundred board members in this state every, every day. Um, and, and knowing, um, what good governance looks like and also knowing what Cave can supply, um, to you is, uh, is really important. The advocacy part of it, the, the partnership that we have with, um, the school, the Department of Education, the legislature, all of those things are meaningful. But when it comes down to it, it's like, how do you, how do you run your board, how do you do it in a way, um, that makes everybody feel comfortable and welcomed and, and coming away with the best decisions for your community? And for your students, because you only have three jobs. One is policy, one is the budget and to spend wisely and, and be fiscally responsible and supervise the, um, the superintendent. Um, you hire them and you are the, um, the body that will evaluate the superintendent. And so those are the three jobs that you have. And while it, um, may seem that there are other jobs that you have that you get into, the finances and the budget and the nitty-gritty, um, those are really the only three roles that board members have. Um, Nick is here to talk a little bit about what Cave does and all of the services that we offer. Um, note two things, that what comes out of the legislature that is mandated, um, we have no choice, we have to, uh, enact those policies. You know, uh, when they said science of reading has to be incorporated into your curriculum, there wasn't a choice, that was, that was, uh, uh, something that everybody had to do. Cell phones, there's no policy, everybody's, you know, responsible for figuring out what that looks like for your district, for your community. Um, we are agents of the state and we are agents of the federal government, we take a, an oath to the constitution. And, um, I can tell you in twenty-seventeen, when I raised my hand, uh, at a, a political party meeting to take an, uh, to fill in for a vacancy, um, I didn't know what I was getting into. I worked in the district, I was also the recording secretary, but the twenty-thousand-foot view that board members have, um, I, I didn't understand. But without Cave's, um, you know, ongoing professional development and leadership training, um, I find myself in a unique position to be the, um, next president of Cave for the state organization. And I couldn't do my job, uh, as a board member in Portland without all of the information and the help and, uh, professional development that I got from Cave. So, you know, my story may not be unique, you may have found yourself in the same position, you know, volunteering or being talked into taking a position on the board. But just know that we're here to support you and both of us have served on boards and, um, and, and know full well what Cave, um, what Cave's capability is. I'm gonna let Nick talk, 'cause I talk too much, and, um, just let him fill you in on all the details.
Alright, well, first, uh, Nick Caruso, um, I was a member of the Bloomfield Board of Education, uh, I'm gonna say a lifetime ago, nineteen eighty-three until nineteen ninety-three. And then nineteen ninety-three, I started working at Cave, working with boards of education, so this is my thirty-second year of doing this work. Um, I owe you a lot because if, if you look at this little map of the state of Connecticut, right here where Lisbon was, was a little white spot until tonight. Because I've met with every board except six. Um, and although I, this is like, I'm here to talk about Cave, I would much rather be able to work with you, whether it's talking about rules and responsibilities, helping with goal-setting, board evaluation, um, board retreats, whatever. Um, it's available to you as members, that, that's one of the benefits, there's no cost to any of that work, by the way. So, um, thank you for giving me one more notch ahead, and I'm hoping maybe three more years to get the other six, but we'll see. Um, and I would say that I've been to Winchester fifty-two times, so we're not talking about just the one shot we're done, I'd love to have that opportunity. So Cave, to me, as a board member, was, um, an opportunity, well, first of all, I was a plumbing contractor in Bloomfield when I first got elected to the Board of Education, it was kinda the same thing. Oh, it's a meeting a month, don't worry about it, it's easy. It was anything but. Um, but along the way, that became my mission in life rather than my business, in fact, I went by the wayside along the way, but I didn't, I don't miss it one bit because this work, um, is important, what you do is important. Oh, and by the way, there's four, we'd have to add policy to that list because you govern through policy. That's okay. Um. I don't wanna spend a lot of time, other than to say, we are here for you in any way we can. I get calls every day as to, uh, we have a staff attorney that won't represent you necessarily, but can answer legal questions of a general nature. He's on the phone constantly with board members, board, and some superintendents will call and say, what should we do about this? And that's a free call, so why not? You know, and even if the advice is, this is really a finely tuned legal issue, you really need to go through your board attorney. If we can save you half of the phone calls, I know shipments charges in six-minute increments, the last I heard, so, um, a free phone call's definitely better. Um, and, and Conrad, who's been our attorney for several years now, is really sharp, I, he's, I think of him as a young kid, he's in his forties, but, um, I used to be that kid. Um, we also, as Meg mentioned, through our government relations activities, um, we influence legislators. Um, one thing that I hope will reassure you, um, I did a study a while, I love data, I like crunching numbers. And, you know, we hear from small rural districts that you really represent the suburban towns or you really represent the urban's districts, we hear from the urban districts, you don't represent us, you represent the small towns. Uh, I did an analysis of our board of directors and our presidents, um, literally a third of our board of directors members tend to come from rural districts. Um, we had one from Hampton, Aunt Grunberg, who just left a, a couple of years ago, but she was on our board of directors for years. Um, a third represents suburban communities and a third do represent urban, so, uh, very widely distributed as far as our presidents and, and, you know, Meg's coming in as our incoming president, they've represented everything from the, dirg, A to F. So, um, and everything in between, so it's really a nice balance, we also don't look at political parties, we're a nonpartisan organization. Um, but I will say that just sort of looking, it's about half and half typically, so, um, we do our best. In fact, I gravitated to Cave, Cave originally, 'cause I was on a very political board and I was in the wrong party. And so all the energy I had, all the things I wanted to do to make things better, I couldn't do them on my board, but I had a place at Cave to learn, to figure out how to make myself more effective and then it eventually did help me become a better board member, so. Um, I'm gonna stop unless you have specific questions, 'cause I, I don't wanna make it this a really hard sell. I did bring, um, a couple of things, Meg insisted, we gotta bring stuff.
No, I, well, information, so.
Yeah. There's a directory, which is all of our board members, uh, our board of directors members and our staff, so you get a sense of who everyone is. There's a booklet on Cave Services. That directory, by the way, is only good for another month because with new elections will become new, new members of our board of directors. And, and we just relogoed everything, so you get a pen with the new logo on it. Thank you. Um, so again, any questions, is there anything in particular that we can do to help you, or?
Um, could you just, do you tell us what the membership fee was again?
Um. I looked it up.
Nice.
I believe it was two thousand, Meg, did I send it to you?
How much is it? Okay.
Two thousand seven hundred and fifty-two dollars.
Oh, okay, seven hundred and fifty-two?
Yeah.
I just wanted to mark.
And our policy update service, which is a service where, um, our staff is, our, Joe DeGolter, by the way, our policy person, is a retired superintendent. And the thing that I like about that is, he's not just looking at it from the legal aspect, 'cause we, our, our attorneys will vet everything as well to make sure it's consistent with law. But as a superintendent, he also knows how to look at a policy to say, if I'm gonna look at this policy, will it guide me or make me more confused? So he adds that extra layer that's really helpful. Um, the phone calls to our policy department, we're working on a policy about homework or whatever, that is all free stuff too. Um, we, the update service is quarterly, he looks at various policies and then does. We, the update service is quarterly, he looks at various policies and then does updates to them and make sure that you see everything consistent and new. At the end of the legislative session, I know he goes in a hibernation for a couple of weeks because he's looking at every piece of legislation that was influenced, that influences education, comes up with sample policy language so that you don't have to do that. And your central office doesn't have to do that because that's an awful lot of work. So, yes.
So I read that, that CAPE legislative book every year and it's very informative. We wouldn't know half of the stuff that's coming down the road without reading that. So my question is, last year we had a couple of our members go to your training. They raved about it. And they brought back books, member books. Can we purchase those?
Yes.
We can.
Yep, we have an online bookstore, you can check stuff off there. If it's, there was a spiral down book that came with the board training in December, December ninth, I think it is, we're going to be providing that training again. So if you get any new board members, they're more than welcome to come. And frankly, because of a grant from the state, the state's paying for that. So there's no charge for anybody to go to that training this year. And there'll probably be another one later in the year. We try to do it two or three times throughout the year. I will also come out and provide training to the boards directly, if that is more advantageous to you, just so you know. And that also is part of your dues, there's no charge for that.
And Meg, you had said before that there was going to be training for new members, but also old or, or also old. After the election, because we know that the change is coming with elections. So you will have, you may have some new board members or you may, you know, be trying to fill seats or whatever after. In any event, in December, I think December's the ninth, and I could be wrong about this.
I haven't looked it up.
It, it's a new, new board member leadership. The state has mandated professional development for new board members. There's no policeman that's going to come and say, you didn't do your board, you know, professional development. But we do keep track of it. So anybody that comes that does participate in new board member orientation and leadership information, it's recorded and you get letters, we send out letters every year to every board member about what they participate in. So you can accumulate points and, and, you know, earn, you can earn leadership of designations later on through twenty hours or forty hours of professional development. Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, you were saying like for existing members too, there were trains.
Right, and we also had a summer, we had a, we, we really got lucky and we were recognized on a national level for this. But we had a five hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant from the Department of Education because of this new professional development requirement that CAPE was able to offer, I don't know how many activities in the course of twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five that were all free. Webinars, leadership conferences, newly, new leadership organization, new, new member orientation. It was really incredible. And we, we are one of the premier states leading the nation in professional development, right? Because we got the grant from the state. We have the grant again this year and will continue to offer as we can free, free orientations and free leadership training.
And I think the book Ian's talking about is the big one.
Right, so we also sell what's called a new board member packet, which comes with the guide. It's the dictionary, the glossary of all the LEA and all the acronyms that board members have to remember and learn. And then the big book from NSBA, which is about how to be an effective board member. And there are chapters about finance and hiring a superintendent and, you know, and board, board evaluating yourself. Have you ever sat down and say, how are we doing as a board? What are we doing that is really, really good? And CAPE recognizes board leadership. And every year at the convention, there are boards recognized for that ability to evaluate themselves and make improvement plans and then be noted that they're going through a checklist and actually achieving good board governance. It's, it's a process. And, you know, if everybody's committed to doing the best for their kids in this district, then CAPE is going to be your partner all the way. And that's, that's all I can say. Thank you.
Great, any other questions? Well, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And there are also our blogs, you know, there's a board chair blog, there's also a policy rabbit table or a policy board.
We've got a bunch of email listeners and there's one for board chairs, there's another one for policy. Although that's pretty quiet, the, the board chair one's very active. If you're not getting them, make sure I find out about that because I can add you to the list. You pose a question, you'll get others' responses back and that, they just tend to follow. And, and we get good activity with that.
I've never seen it.
Well, you know, and again, a lot of boards don't pay, you know, advantage and a look at the website. We'll make sure. I, I hope tonight that you will vote to become and, and remain a member of the CAPE family. We will come out as many times as we have to to make sure that you get what you need and know what we have available. Because I think that's my job and, as president and the board of directors. We are going to make sure that boards like Lisbon, like Portland, like some of the other smaller districts that really struggle with, you know, finances and board policies and all the rest of it, that you have what you need from CAPE. We, we know what best practices look like and we can provide that service for you. So I really hope that you'll continue to be part of the family of CAPE. And we're going to make sure that you know all the services that are available. And we'll probably drive you crazy in the meantime, but just know that we'd love to have you come back and be part of us.
And selfishly, I hope you remain on that on the tape, that you'll take advantage of some of the TV that we provide. I really live for the work I do out in the districts, way more than the stuff I do in the office. So every, I'm going to be at Hampton Wednesday night, I'm going to be in Ashford, I think, next week. So I'm in the area a lot, but I'd like to spend more time here, so it's there.
Great, thank you very much.
And you'll be on the list tomorrow.
Great.
You dropped a pen down there. So thank you again, and like I said, I hope you'll remain part of the CAPE family. And we'll make sure that you have all the information that you need.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Great seeing you. I'm maybe from Brighton. You're a good man.
Hold on to that purple book, I don't need it back.
Okay, thank you.
So for the new members, we were, we were members, we were members of CAPE for a long time.
Yeah.
And when we switched from shipment and Goodwin, when we switched from CAPE to shipment and Goodwin policies, we kind of let the CAPE thing lapse because we didn't really use them for anything else. But it seems like that they have increased their resources too.
They have, they got better with the policies and everything. Yeah.
Yeah, yep.
So in my mind, I think the twenty-six hundred dollars is well worth it, if nothing more than just a new member training. I think it is pretty phenomenal.
Yeah. Policy. Yeah, yeah.
All right, so I'll make a motion to renew the CAPE subscription for FY twenty-five, twenty-six.
Okay, one sec, yep. I'll second.
Any questions or discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Posted, all right, she knows. So Jonathan can take care of that.
Yep, I'll talk to him.
All right, so now we have an employee resignation. I'll read this, seems to be a theme tonight. All right, so this is an email, it says, hi Christopher, sorry, I have no choice, I am very sick. I understand that I am very frustrated by trying to focus on getting better. I am upset about being so sick and I understand that I am new and just have had three days in. At this point, the way my health is, I am going to resign. I don't know what else to do. Thank you for the opportunity and I wish that I didn't have to do this. But at this time, I don't know how well I will feel. Marcia Pompey. So for those who don't know, she was hired as a principal secretary. She didn't last very long, she got sick. So we need a motion to accept her resignation with regrets.
I'll make the motion.
Karen seconds. Any questions, discussion? All's in favor? Posted, all right, motion taken.
So what happens now?
Yeah, another one.
We posted.
But does Catherine, isn't she supposed to move on?
Well, we posted and if she wants to apply for the job, she can apply back. If she wants, yep, yep.
And in the meantime, she'll stay put?
In the meantime, she's still helping out.
Yeah.
I, I'm talking for your secretary, I'm sorry. I, go ahead, Chris.
But in the meantime, she's been helping out in the office.
Okay.
And that gets through October first number.
Help you with that, okay.
Who's talking? Who's Catherine? Was it just resigned?
No. That's the new one.
Yeah.
Catherine was the old one. Well, she got a new position in the school, so that's why I was wondering who was going to help Christopher in the meantime.
She's been sitting in the front office.
All right, on to our annual Sback and MGSS assessment.
That's Christopher and Kelly.
Good evening, once again.
You want them to look at the board, right?
Yes. So we have Carl up there to welcome us for this presentation. So it's your annual assessments twenty twenty-five. So we're going to start out with ELA. I don't want to read the numbers to you, but I highlighted the LCF score for ELA.
Now, where are the COVID kids? They in the fourth grade now or? The year that we were shut down.
Yeah, they're, yeah, they're grade five.
Grade five now?
The grade five is. You think that's the grade five now or they were grade five then?
Grade five now. No.
No, now.
The difference between now and there.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say, the five now and there, I think that's the confusion. I, I think, okay.
So I believe that COVID is thirty-seven that you see right there.
Yeah, that's what I'm, that's what I'm answering. That'd be grade six now.
Yes, grade six, grade six now, yes.
You are correct, Dave, at least that's my understanding.
So my question is, do you, do you see any correlation between what they might have missed in that COVID year and what we see now as they get up in higher levels now?
Yeah, I mean, we have, we, we do see that. We also see that there's some unfinished learning in some of the other grades too. I think that's going to count. And we actually kind of started doing an analysis, which will be at the end of this presentation, some thoughts, some thoughts we got from the teachers and also our next steps too. So that, I think, will also address your, your question, Ian.
Yeah, it's not.
Again, the COVID, if you look at the state numbers, the state numbers are not that different for that COVID year. I think it's, again, it's a small sample size. We have classes that are high performing, some years are not. It's something somewhere between thirty-two and fifty-five kids. There are all those kinds that are blocked out differently.
Yeah, I'm glad you said that.
Like grade five, well, we have the school in charge of block out because their numbers are small.
Yes.
And we're on the, we're on the brink.
We're on the brink.
For a small sample size.
Correct, Dave.
Here is significantly weird to hear, the only number that matters to me is the cohort comparison.
Yeah, and that's important. Can I, can I just capitalize on what you said? And it's not excuses, by the way, because we've got some work to do. But with Lisbon, you're absolutely right, Dave, we're on the cusp, our numbers count. Most of the other districts, they can't give us, it's not, it's not valid.
I agree.
They, they're below that sample size. So you got to remember all that, that makes a big difference. But anyway, you go ahead, you two go ahead.
So we did, we did create a, a graph of all the, the area schools. So you can kind of see where they are at with their achievements.
North Franklin has about seven kids.
Well, I wouldn't say seven, but, but they have small class sizes.
Very small class size.
But I wouldn't say seven.
That's going to be reflected in our grade, our grade level comparisons.
I'm not sure, but we'll look. Yeah, and I think it's dry.
But I will also like to add a statement that although it is a small sample size typically, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, that particular grade level that has seen some struggle is our grade level that is significantly larger.
It is.
For other classes.
Yeah, you're going to hear that. Yeah, it was in around twenty-five, I believe, and you're, you're going to hear later.
I know it's a separate, I know it's a separate topic and it's separate topic on the agenda, but then in the back, most of those other small schools that you see there, there are not twenty-five kids in probably any of those classes.
Correct. You are correct. You'll, you'll hear it later too, I, I think, you're going to go into that, yeah, okay.
All right, so now we go to grade level. So this is our grade three class. And this is area school comparison. And you'll notice the Bosrak, Canterbury, Franklin, Volantown, again, the numbers are suppressed due to the class sizes. Yes.
Yes, it is, yes. They are, yeah, you're right.
I skipped a slide there. So, yeah, because actually we can do a cohort comparison for grade three. Grade four.
That's significantly below state average. We have represented a person significantly below state average.
And then looking at our cohort comparison, grade three to grade four.
Which is a good group, yeah?
Oh, oh, yeah. And by cohort, I think everyone knows it, but you wanted to find, it's the same ki-
It's the same kids, yeah, it's the same kids from grade three assessing grade four. So any of the new kids aren't included in that number, anyone left the district is not included in that number. And this is our area school comparison. Grade five.
Yes, that's the top one.
Grade five cohort comparison. Comparing to area schools.
The Volantown number doesn't make any sense. Why is, why is your grade five so much higher than other, other than grade?
We question that and also Franklin, but it's got to be right, it came from the state, it's got to be right. Yeah, it's just, it's bigger, yeah. It's like our sixth grade right now. What's your hill of rock, you'll hear about that.
Moving on to grade six achievement. Did I go too fast? Cohort comparison. Comparing to area schools. Moving on to grade seven. Looking at the cohort comparison. Comparing to other schools. Moving on to grade eight. Grade seven to eight cohort comparison. Area schools.
Nobody taught them any differently than the grade eight the year before, or the grade eight this year. And we can't, I mean, the cohort is big, that's, that's the problem, they created a big break, they did, but they did great as other commissioners, and they're gorgeous.
Yeah, for most of them, but we don't wanna sugarcoat it either, you know, we're, we're taking this so seriously about getting it better, which, like, I gotta give a lot of credit to these two people right here, in terms of the analysis.
Yeah, you're gonna see that shortly.
Oh.
Yeah, what we're doing, yeah. Move on to, to, uh, to math.
Well, I'm excited about the eighth grade numbers because those ones matter.
Well, that's, tell them which goal, we had our goal of working with who?
Yeah, we, we were working with Suzanne, Heidi, and Mary.
Because of your comment last year. So administration, which I'm gonna say was right, wrong, or different, we put our focus on the middle school levels.
And Marty as well.
Yeah, yeah, but anyway.
I mean, it's huge, if they, if they enter high school behind the power curve in the ELA map, they're in trouble. From the start. I don't think the high school takes its time to go back and teach them.
Right, moving on to, this is where we are, uh, area schools.
I mean, that, that, to me, that is a, that's a struggle, if we are below the state average.
It is.
As a school. Because the state is upgrading all.
Yeah, it is, yep.
I understand sometimes, you know, prepare for certain towns and that, but we should.
We got, we got work to do.
I agree totally.
Let's look at grade level. So grade three. Grade three, other area schools.
No, no, well, not, no, this year, I mean, it came up.
Grade four.
And look at the grade, when you say grade three, they're, oh, this year, again, grade three, when they were, they were fifty, two years ago, they were thirty one percent.
They were thirty something.
And so they eat chicken on Friday.
Yeah.
Yep. This is our cohort comparison.
That's an odd one to me, especially because that grade three was a fairly low starting point. They were thirty one percent achieving when they were in grade three. For them to go down in a cohort thing is, uh, an odd, an odd one to me.
And again, we're gonna talk about that unfinished learning in our upcoming slides. Uh, area schools. Moving on to grade five.
The grade five, this year is obviously.
Well, grade, it'll be grade six this year.
Will be grade six.
Yeah.
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 It was, yes, it was, yep.
Cohort comparison.
Yeah, bad, I shouldn't use that word, it's, it's, can I use it? Okay, well, I don't wanna offend anyone, it's disappointing.
Yeah. Looking at area schools.
Notice that it is typically, or traditionally, whatever the word is, high.
Uh.
It's so high, even one reason now.
Well, Dave and I will put on the table something called, uh, our semi-departementalization, which we did try one year, and it doesn't matter, we got away from it, uh, after one year. Even though the teachers were working very hard, it wasn't like they gave up, it's one thing when you're confronting that, that was not the issue, those teachers worked darn hard that year, I know for a fact. But the, because the math sank for that one year, and the ELA went up, and our focus was math, uh, and, and the board had every right, decided not to continue. What's interesting, you're gonna hear from me as your superintendent, is, and Dave will tell you this, I was not in, um, sync about going department, do you remember that? Departementalization, however, once we did it, I was in sync, we should have kept it for more than one year, remember that, Dave? Because you can't tell anything in one year, not if everyone's working, it's one thing if you're not, but those teachers, I know for facts, I, we met with them, it was an apposite of me, I believe. It does, and, um, well, I don't know if I should say this, but you.
I spoke to, I spoke to the principal about that, and he's like, well, yeah, I have my thoughts about grade four, but, you know, for grade five, uh, he says that that really helps.
We didn't wanna, well, and I, I don't know, you know what, you, you, wanna keep going?
Yeah.
Okay.
Let's move on to grade six. Looking at your cohort comparison. Compared to area schools.
Next, we dwell above state average.
Yes, the middle, right, right.
Grade seven. Cohort comparison.
Yeah, I really like using these are great.
Well, yeah, we, well, because of your, well, it wasn't just your comment, it was other people's comment, like, oh, you focus on your middle school getting ready for high school, that was, that was administrative goal, um. I don't know, yeah.
Looking at your area schools. Looking at grade eight.
Oh, yours, I'm sorry, I thought it was mine. Yeah, those, those are.
It's great.
Yeah.
So do you think if we went to.
Sorry.
Departementalization, that we could do that twenty two percent grade five, or grade five up to these kind of numbers?
That was part of our analysis, if you will, of, um, when we were looking at the data, and coming up with next steps, you know, we had put down, uh, to explore that possibility. Um, NGSS?
Um, well, I think these comments.
I just wanted to say, while they're coming, that I love all of our teachers, all our teachers are great.
Yeah.
And I was specifically.
I know who.
Mention Mary Nolan.
Yeah.
Expanding it down to grade six, I think it's a big help.
Well, we have, yeah, I'm sorry.
To the grade seven, eight, but she's a math teacher.
Uh huh.
And we, in the past, we've had the kids go for science at an early grade, getting a science teacher.
We did, we did.
With specified block every.
Correct.
Day, or whatever.
Yeah.
How many days would it be?
My watch, yeah.
If when math is not done, department, when you don't split and change for math, to me, it's always easier, as a teacher, maybe we didn't get the full hour, we don't, we maybe don't do the full hours here for that, because none of the kids are going. And the kids also don't see it, maybe, as being as important as not switching for it, but if they're gonna switch for science, like.
And we do.
And, and someone who, is a, who loves math, and that's what they really wanna teach, then that's, I, I think it's, um, it can be a big difference. Sorry, go to the side.
No, no, it's okay.
Yeah, and we're gonna address some of the questions, I think, we, we had posed some questions to ourselves, of what might be asked, so we kind of put that out on some upcoming slides. Let's look at science.
Yep.
This is, uh, how we fared as a school for grades five and eight. Looking at grade five achievement.
Oh, hi, Joe.
Looking at the grade five, um, and I don't know if you guys know, but I was leading, when we, when Steve retired.
Yeah.
We lost some degree of our, um, failure, they don't get as much science in certain grade levels that they used.
Oh, the science lab.
Science lab.
It was a lab.
I, I don't wanna say the in-class science, I didn't.
That's okay, yeah, yeah.
The specified science lab teacher, not as much as we used.
Yeah, it was cut, I don't, I forgot how much, not a lot, but it was reduced, it was reduced a little bit in time. Um, you are correct on that, I, I can't give you the exact number of minutes, though, I keep thinking twenty, but don't, don't, don't quote me on that one, oh, please, I meant.
Moving on to grade eight. And then looking at the cohort.
That's, that's the important one. That's a three-year cohort, you are correct, yep. So the science is pretty, like I said, well, I get, I shouldn't say, Ian said, sorry, give you the credit, that going to high school was kind of the goal, but we gotta make it the goal of the whole school that we, we got work to do, but anyway. Oh, yeah, you, you two did a good job on this.
Yeah, so, um, do you wanna?
Sure, um, just to kind of look at the strengths overall for ELA and math, when you look at some of the targets, so, yes, there's certain grades that go up and down, but overall, ELA has moved from forty five percent to forty nine percent. So there's, there are definitely, um, improvements there, and overall, the reading scores are trending upwards, um, and we'll get into the science of reading, how that was, um, launched last year, and how that's gonna continue this year. Um, so I one hundred percent think that our ELA scores will continue to go up because of the science of reading. Um, also, in our grade four and five, their ability to comprehend informational text has been a strength that has increased, which, as an English teacher, I find is often harder. Um, for, usually, we're just focusing on literacy and fictional texts, so their ability to comprehend informational text is really impressive. Um, and overall, the, um, students who are in grade six, seven, eight, the number of kids who are reaching proficiency, that went up specifically for ELA. Same with math, um, grade three and grade six were definitely standouts, fifty two to now sixty percent, and then grade six, forty four and fifty four. Um, our K to two is showing improvements in their number identification, and their number sense, their number fluency, grades three and four, some of the targets that stood out, um, for those kiddos, were the target, just their concepts and their procedures are really strong. And then eighth grade has success in that real-world problem solving, and I think that correlates nicely with why our science scores are so high, cuz they are showing the ability to transfer what they're learning in math classes, along with their ELA ability to critically think. So overall, the eighth grade, um, uh, made improvements in that, that particular target as well. Probably some of the reasons, and I wasn't here, so I'm guessing, but, um, the data tells me, um, our ELA is improving because of inter-reading, so the science of reading that we've talked about was launched last year. Um, the really cool thing about it is the state realized that it can't just be a K to two or K to three initiative anymore, because reading is a lifelong goal, and it needs to be a K to twelve focus. So we have the luxury of having K to eight in the same building, and just last Friday, we did an entire PD of how we can all implement, um, that science of reading. And we had teachers get together in groups and look at standards, and we put them in order, like I didn't tell them the numbers of the standards, but put them in the progression of what this looks like, from kindergarten all the way up to eighth grade, so that you can see everybody in the building, which standards you need to be teaching when. Um, we also took a word, um, jurisprudence, and I had three teachers come up and say, here's how a kindergarten teacher would teach you the syllables of this word, here's how a second-grade teacher would teach you the phonemes and the graphemes of this word. Then we had Brian Apperson, a sixth-grade teacher, come up, and here's how you do the morphology of this word, so kind of the, to end the point earlier, um, how, you know, high school is not gonna teach this anymore, if it doesn't get taught now, well, actually, finally, it is going to, so here's how to transfer it. Um, Sal kinda already touched upon the administrative focus last year of maybe why those sixth, seventh, and eighth graders, um, were achieving even more than usual, they were definitely prepared overall for high school. Um, and then something that happened last year, but Christopher and I made sure to give time to at the beginning of this year, was, once teachers were able to look at the last three years of trends for their Sback data, as well as what exactly were the strengths and weaknesses of their current kids that they're gonna have in front of them this year, making adjustments to an assessment calendar that everybody has access to. So when should you be giving certain assessments, looking at your data, do you need to do more IABs, less, think about timing, change the pacing, your scope and sequence, so there was time given at, um, in August, to make changes based off of the Sback data that we're sharing with you now.
Yeah, and one of the things that came out of our conversations too, was, you know, how often do we test, especially at the end of the year, uh, cuz we have our benchmark testing at the end of the year, we also have our Sback and our science. So how can we, um, break them up, so that they're not on top of each other, so you get that, you know, test saturation, um, and so we looked at that, and we did make some adjustments for this year.
And that's good.
So one of the things, um, we had looked at the Sback data over the summer, and one of the activities that we, what we, what we wanted to do was, okay, bring it to the teachers, and, you know, let's look for their feedback. And so what we wanted them to do is look at, um, the trends, the strengths, the areas of growth, using a note catcher, and, um, Kelly led a, a PD on how to use this note catcher, and, do you wanna talk more about that part?
Um, sure, and I just included this up here, because these are actually observations from the teachers, when they were given the time to look over their own data, what did they identify as areas of strengths? Um, and then we added on to that on the last PD, after we launched Recon two point O, we gave time for teachers to, on a, another note catcher, here's the summary, so I summarized what each grade level said for their strengths, weaknesses, and then added another column of, what does the next year grade level teachers need to know? So if that was your grade three strength, what do you need to tell grade four, cuz now they just inherited your grade three kids, right? So just trying to get that vertical alignment, which again, we have the luxury of having in-house, um, everybody who's in this room and got to say, okay, what do you need to do next, what did I not get to this year, tag, you're it.
And so we looked at, um, areas of growth, especially looking at the Sback, and so we looked at the ELA, what are the areas for growth for Sback, and then we also looked at the math. So we found that oral reading, fluency, and comprehension was definitely something that we needed to spend a little more time on, uh, phonics decoding support beyond the primary grades, look at the evidence-based writing and research, particularly in those four to eighth grade span, and then listening comprehension, we noticed that there was kind of dip towards the upper grades, so what can we do? For areas of math, looking at that number sense, in fact, fluency, K to five, um, problem solving, looking at the data modeling, G R T measurement gaps, upper elementary, so, and we've talked about, I mentioned that whole unfinished learning piece, and that's what we're talking about. You know, one of the activities that we did in this past, uh, PD, was we had the teachers write down the standards that they did not get to, so that we can incorporate that into this year's, um, work. And then place value in decimals. So based on last year's Sback, this year we are focusing on, so we had mentioned about the October tenth PD, which you, which we just did, um, Kelly and the team, uh, talked about Recon, we identified standards not taught, uh, we shared them with, with the next grade level, begin work on formal written curriculum for ELA. Future PD, we're gonna continue to write the curriculum, this is across the board, we have, we're developing a common document, so that we have written curriculum in every single grade. Um, we'll integrate standards not taught to last year units this year to close the gaps, and we'll identify the Sback targets that were weaker and correspond with fall Eames Web data. So we plan on doing more work with our, in our November fourth PD, which is coming up in a couple of weeks, to continue this. Um, and the teachers were really engaged, when we were working on this, they were extremely engaged in trying to figure out what they can do to, um, improve the instruction and, and the achievement of the kids in their classes.
Sure, um, this year for interventionists, we have, um, in grade one, two, um, Brian Apperson is doing the reading interventionist there, and then Megan, um, is in charge of K three, four. So during our data teams, uh, myself, the teachers, and the interventionists, and sometimes our special education teachers will join us too, and we really get to look at exactly how the kids are doing, making our MTSS groups, progress monitoring the students, checking in, are they making progress, are they not, moving kids around in those groups. Um, but having that, you know, the K to four interventionist is new for at least that structure, that's where Brian and Megan are, are this year. Um, and that's kind of something, um, Dave, that is also missing in those math upper grades, is that you can see they stop in grade four. So interventionist, while we're trying to make it streamlined and as strong as we possibly can, it does stop in grade four. Um, so our overall goal is, if you look at the Sback scores, the majority of our students are in approaching, and to me, that's, you have to get them over that hump, I hate the phrase, but. And to me, that's, you have to get them over that hump, I hate the phrase, but it's an easier move to get the majority of our kids into meet and exceeds if we are focusing on our tier, should say two, and tier-three instruction with the help of our classroom teachers. 'Cause obviously, the majority of our kids are sitting in tier one, they're sitting in the classroom, they're not in those, those pull-up groups. So everybody's focus is moving the majority of our kids from approaching to that next step up. Um, definitely, we need to fix on building supports for sixth grade, because we know the gap that exists in fifth grade, but those sixth-grade teachers just inherited that, that issue, they inherited those kids. Um, the ones who are struggling, they need the help, they need the interventions, they need the support. So we are trying to figure out how exactly we can do that, um, and there isn't an interventionist there to help, so. Um, all of us across the board are using a new updated progress monitoring form that is aligned with MTSS. So that is going home to parents. If your kid is receiving tier-two or tier-three instruction, every teacher's filling it out in the same, the same information is going home, and then it also, um, informs our MTSS referral process. So everything is streamlined, one paper, one-stop shopping, um, and so far, so good.
I have one question. Is it possible that in the early, earlier grades, the, the younger kids just don't have the maturity to take the tests seriously?
I'll take that for you, um, well, so if the first time they're taking SPECT is grade three, which is our strongest grade so far. Three, they had the most success, so do I want a third grader overly tested all the time? No, they're little, right? But there's something that, yes, they are doing well on that grade three.
Obviously getting the building class, 'cause our sixth, seventh, and eighth-grade test scores are great, right? So they're not, not learning the materials, maybe they're just not good at testing, or they don't take it.
Well, the part that is in the control of teachers is the skills and the concepts, right? 'Cause we're not, we don't create the SPECT test, it's one data point, right? But what we can be in charge of is what we're teaching our kids, following the standards. And the hardest part of teaching sometimes too is figuring out the gap, and especially with reading. It is rocket science, that's why it's now called science of reading, right? So if you hit fourth, fifth, sixth grade, but you have a gap that's somewhere in kindergarten or somewhere in first grade, it's the same for math too. What is it that's causing you to lag behind? That is really hard for teachers to diagnose, right? But that's the part of the science of reading that we're all getting a little bit better at, is almost taking the time to go backwards. I'll use Brian's example, uh, Apperson as an example, he has his sixth-grade team right now. He's going back and using a core phonics, um, fluency to figure out where exactly those kids struggled. And maybe it is just with phonics, or syllables, or blending of words, or CVC words, or whatever it is. And just 'cause they're sixth graders doesn't mean you can't go back, find out where it was that something's missing, build it back in pretty quickly, and then hit the ground running again, and get right back into sixth-grade curriculum.
Ian, you made a good point there, I think when you said some of the kids maybe aren't trying, that, that's a big factor in standardized tests at a lot of grade levels. If they know it doesn't count for their grade, and you get certain kids that that's enough, and maybe not put their best effort forward. And they're not all the intrinsically motivated, starting off something to be identified with a simple app or class, or bring on the does-well. Something, something where there's a little more desire of the kids to do their best. And that could be, I think, uh, that's, I agree, I agree, but a, a overall type thing, because I've gotta believe that's a factor for my end.
That's a good point.
I could see two where in third grade, they're excited to take the test, because you're the only person who wants to. And then you kinda hit those intermediate grades, and they're like, get going. And then by sixth, sixth, sixth grade.
Well, I'm more mature, I understand.
The interventionist thing, I, I, I apologize, I can't remember which school, and it may have been playing field, some of the local schools, they didn't hire a, a certified teacher, they hired like a teacher's aide who was strong in, uh, strong in math, and is helping out in a few grade levels focusing on math. And might be a cost-effective approach worth examining. Um, again, not gonna be for everybody, but someone who likes math, is strong in math, and is willing to work across a couple of grade levels. I believe was playing field, I apologize if I'm wrong, I'll try to check with the person who told me about it.
Yeah, I don't know, I can't help you out there.
I'll, I'll check and see.
Okay.
It was, instead of not adding a certified teacher.
No, was it a support person?
It was a support person, apparently reasonably priced support person, um, but spoke to them.
Which you'll hear later on, it's coming up after the October one, a proposal for sixth grade, 'cause the numbers aren't even accurate on here, it went up again, sixth grade.
I know, like, six percent is impossible to have, a second person who came out, who made certain kids art. They're not leading to what that teacher is teaching, and they need a different way, you know, that's important, you have the same math.
Yeah.
Challenging the both.
And that's, and that's kinda what we're thinking about, the whole departmentalization of grade five, you know, a thought there.
Um, but I'll, I'll say this, that I truly appreciate the, uh, analysis. Um, I've sat on this board for a lot of years, and, and I'm sure some other members here don't remember this kind of analysis, um, of SPECT or MTSS. And, uh, I know it's a lot of work, and, and you guys did a great job.
And the teachers too.
Yeah.
Yeah, but the leadership was excellent, the few times I could sit in, I thought it was great. You, you two did a good job.
You made a good team.
You made a good team, you really do. But anyway, okay.
All right, so we wanted to talk about some, uh, next steps.
Okay.
So, um, short-term, looking at our data teams, we are meeting regularly, um, Kelly does attend, um, mostly all of, all of them. Um, we're looking at continuing to look at the groups in our MTSS groups. We're in the process of progress monitoring now, our first progress monitor went home, uh, when we sent them, uh, middle-school progress reports. Uh, then we're sharing strategies, resources to improve those outcomes. Mobimax, uh, what we're looking at now, so we are using Mobimax, the focus is on ELA, but we wanna, we wanna be more prescriptive. Um, so we're actually looking at the SPECT, uh, targets, uh, that's our, what we're in the process of starting to work on now. And then our long-term goals, looking at, and this is the question, departmentalizing, departmentalization of grade five. We're looking at that ricket, written curriculum by the end of the year, and then we're also looking at trying to make sure we have common language, that, that vocabulary, co, uh, scope and sequence. Yep. Go team.
So I, I am, I'm very receptive to, uh, pursuing Dean, departmentalizing, I think, departmentalizing in fifth grade. But I'd like to hear from, um, what is Mary Nolan? Do you, she think it's a good idea, or?
Well.
I speak for, on Mary's behalf, sure.
Yeah.
She won myself.
Yeah.
Um, Mary and I have a lot of conversations, and she has such a mind for the curriculum and the pacing. Um, she knows exactly where the kids need to be, six, seven, eight, she knows where they're going in high school, and she knows how to get them to where she wants them to be in sixth grade, but she has very high standards for those kids. Um, I think she, and she's already working on writing the curriculum for sixth grade, and just yesterday, she, she asked me like, hey, can I get together with the other grades so that we can write curriculum together, so that we can be vertically aligned? Like, she is the team player who's gonna get that job done. Um, I think she and I share the same concern that, like, yes, that's a great idea, but it's still, like, we wanna make sure we're also supporting those kids that are struggling right now, and we know they're sitting in sixth grade. So even if, yes, departmentalizing is in the best of all worlds, works perfectly with the right math teachers, teaching the right kids, the right special education support, sure. But unless we're always following where those struggling students are going and what they're struggling with, we kind of always will sit on that, that lower score. So in my mind and Mary's mind, there's kind of two parts right now. Making sure I'm meeting our kids where they're at right now, and then also setting them up for, and our system up for success in the very near future, hopefully.
In the departmentalization currently in sixth, seventh, eighth, is it also leveled, or just, you know what I mean, is it?
No, there, there's some leveling, particularly for the math.
And I believe, and if you're wrong, we don't check, but some places it's just departmentalization where it's, uh, heterogeneous.
Correct, yeah.
That is just having a math teacher, where on the other count, it is a leveled instruction where the programs are being accelerated to a degree.
They are, Mary.
Kids who need more work are being worked at that level to get to where they need to be, so.
Mary has like track tracks. And it's called accelerated right now, but I also think one of the areas we can improve upon is having Mary or whoever be part of that conversation at the end of fifth grade, of making the decisions of which group makes more sense, or which class makes more sense for those kids next year in that sixth grade.
So do you think it'd be reasonable to ask the administration to come up with a, um, a, uh, announces and a recommendation for next year? Uh, as far as staff and covering Dylan goes for fifth graders? Maybe we could see that.
Because we're obviously not gonna do it this year.
No, no, we, we haven't still, we have the framework, we, yeah, we do, yeah. Also, um, and again, I'm jumping ahead, but just so you can, um, Mary did, uh, approach, uh, well, at least me, but I think it might have been all three.
Yeah.
Am I right on that? Okay.
She did.
Um, about sixth grade, and that, um, and she's bigger, if we could have support, some kind of support in sixth grade. The numbers are up, and you're gonna hear later that fifty percent of that class, a wonderful class, is specialized in five oh four, fifty percent. And then another no, another kiddo just, we can't wait, but another kiddo just came through the door. So there's gonna be a couple of recommendations, but in terms of Ian's thing that he kind of think about next year for departmentalization.
We can get something together for you.
Definitely. And we can use the old framework, it's still cur, I mean, it still would work.
Does anybody else wanna say anything?
Uh, on that topic, no, I think that I, I'm all in favor of, of it all, I mean, again, just to clarify, if it's grade five, we all go up with it. And I'm not saying we want to defend it, but I'm saying if it works, if all of those things are doing, that are successful, is grade five leveled, or is it ever again?
Yeah, okay. Um, I can tell you that in the past, when we tried it for that one year, it was not leveled in fifth grade.
I know.
Oh, oh, you do? Oh, okay.
I don't know where other.
Oh, you mean others, whether they do it? Gotcha, okay. Okay.
Yeah, I'll reach out.
We'll, we'll bring that back, we'll bring everything back. Oh, yeah, okay. Okay, yeah, we'll bring it back.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Okay.
What was your, your, your second thing, though, was getting some help?
Yeah, that's coming up, I, I, I thought you might wanna hear first, um, where we are with money with the October, um, because we do have grant money that, um, tend to refer to under seed, and I just wanted you to see that October one, we're really doing kind of okay, so we could use that grant money for support in sixth grade. But, anyway, okay.
All right, any other questions? We good? Thank you.
What is it?
Uh, Marcy.
Yeah, we did, and I'll talk to you later.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
All right, uh, item D, uh, transportation tuition.
All right, so in your packets, you do have a, a spreadsheet or, uh, labeled enrollment figures for October one, twenty twenty-five. Um, I was just gonna go through these, uh, sheets, and then obviously, if there's any questions, happy to, uh, answer them for you. So right now, based on tuition and the related services of some of our special education students, um, the net, if you will, is we are in the whole from, well, actually, like, let me explain the whole process, I suppose for those who don't recall, but, um, we're basically analyzing the budget against the actual. So in, in our budget process, you know, you'll see there's, there's, we're gonna reference budgeted, uh, versus actual. So we budgeted for a hundred and seventy-one students in regular high school education, and we ended with a hundred and seventy-four. Um, we budgeted thirty-four, uh, specialized high school students, and we ended with thirty. Um, and then you can see it down on this for elementary, tuition, regular ed, and special ed. And then summer school, we had fifteen students in the budget, uh, only twelve attended. Um, and that's how we came up with the, with the, those figures. And then the dollars, uh, obviously coincide with, with the same, yep. Yes, a hundred and two students.
I mean, being in arrears.
Yes, yeah, and, no, yeah, you're right, you're also right, yeah. And on the next page, you'll see it too, but yeah, NFA is, um, regular education is last year's numbers, and then their specialized is for this particular year. Uh, but with all these, um, students with the transportation costs, the related services, and their tuition, uh, we are off by thirteen hundred dollars. Um, so, could be a lot worse.
This is great, we used to be three hundred thousand times the whole.
Right, let's, uh, let's not get old ourselves. Um, but the next page is, uh, strictly high school. So you'll see you have two columns, one is regular education, uh, the right-hand side is special education. And we have all of our schools, but only certain figures align with certain schools, obviously based on who, who's attending. Um, so you'll see LS Tech, we did not have someone in the budget, but there is a student there, uh, thanks to LS Tech, it's a technical school, we don't have a tuition fee. Uh, Grasso Tech, we were six and six, uh, we were one under-budgeted on, um, Griswold. And, and so on, as you go down, and then, uh, to Ian's point, you'll see NFA, uh, we had a hundred and two students there last year, uh, and we were billed accordingly. Um, we did, um, have a new student attend Lyman. Uh, we had a, um, we had a Voag student in the budget, which is capped with the state magnet school at about thirty-nine hundred dollars. However, a regular ed high school student is attending Lyman, and that is about a twelve thousand dollar tuition. Um, so that will, you can see the deficit there. So with, uh, high school regular education, we were in a, in a whole twenty-three thousand dollars. With high school, special ed, we are positive ninety-four thousand dollars. That is largely due to, um, NFA special ed, we had budgeted seven students, five of them are no longer attending the school, only two of them are there. Uh, that netted a savings of a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. Um, we also gained a student though at Griswold High School, um, in, I wanna call it regular special education. Um, so we were in the whole twenty-eight thousand dollars there, but we also had a, a new student who was not in the budget, attend the Soul Street Academy, which is Griswold's, um, I guess sort of their in-house outplacement alternative school. Uh, that's a tuition of fifty-one, uh, thousand dollars, uh, which, again, was not in the budget. So you can see there with Griswold, together about seventy-nine thousand dollars off on their tuition for special education. Um, we had some other savings within the special education, um, department. Um, you can see with ACT and Eastcon, just that, um, in theory, uh, we, their, their actual came in less, obviously, than we budgeted, so that, that gave us a little. Yeah, yeah, you can't necessarily call it savings, 'cause they, they did, uh, last year, they gave it to us, that's for sure. Um, then the next page is your elementary students, uh, that are outplaced, uh, not necessarily outplaced, but just magnet schools and, and other areas. So with regular education, um, pretty much right on the mark there, three kids on the budget, three kids attending, and we saved five hundred and fifteen dollars. Um, and then special education, um, this one's a, a little interesting, you'll see that we budgeted for two students, and we have two students. However, we had a student who, um, when, I, I suppose, and, and Dan, you can correct me if I'm wrong, opposite of the student, but when she was last enrolled, really, um, was not coming into school, mom was transporting, so there wasn't really a transportation fee, and we had budgeted, um, for her to be at an outplacement for seventeen weeks, with the hopes that she would then come back to our school, uh, mom would be transporting her, and, uh, she'd be in our building. However, she's having phenomenal success, uh, at an outplacement school. Um, the only problem financially is that her tuition's a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. Um, we had budgeted twenty-eight thousand dollars for this particular student, which puts us in a hole with her about a hundred and four thousand. But again, um, she's having great success, I do know the goal is to eventually get her back within, uh, LCS. Um, for this school year, she'll most likely be, uh, at the behavior, uh, I'm sorry, the behavior approach. Um, they did work with us on the tuition, which was good, they're giving us an hourly breakdown while she is now, um, a full-day student. Uh, so we did save, I think, six thousand dollars in tuition, um, but in January, she'll jump to the, uh, or it's believed she'll jump to the full-day tuition cost, uh. And again, it's gonna be, with related services, it's gonna be about a hundred and thirty, two thousand dollars.
She included in our excess cost estimate?
She will be, yeah, yeah. Uh, she was not at the budget process of last year, because again, she wasn't, um, we didn't know she was attending the school, but she, she is on our spreadsheet now. Um, then the next one, uh, which was a good savings, and I suppose it was by choice of the families and the parents, um, we had three students basically not attend, um, E S Y. Um, two, uh, one student did not attend Eastcon, which put a savings of ninety-one hundred dollars in. And two students did not attend the Learning Clinic, uh, which was a savings of about thirty-five thousand dollars. And then one of our other students, who was at an outplacement, um, ended up in a different location. And, um, there was a savings on their. And, um, there was a savings on their tuition, because they went to a tutor as opposed to the outplaced tuition, and we saved twelve thousand dollars there. So E S Y budget, um, saved fifty-five thousand dollars, which obviously then offset that hundred and four thousand we were off in the elementary tuition. Um, the next page is then is our transportation cost, and this is also where we, uh, were hit pretty hard, um, from the budgets to the actual. Um, you'll notice. Um, there's two months in a row, but a better time. Um, you'll notice there's two line items in each section that there was not a budget figure for. Again, one of them is the student in which her mother was transporting her, uh, we did not budget transportation. And then she also, instead of being transported to Lisbon, is being transported down the whole line. So there is additional cost. So for the school year, uh, that unbudgeted student, uh, is costing thirty-four thousand dollars in transportation, and there was a summer, uh, E S Y transportation, forty-three hundred dollars. Uh, we also had another student whose, um, I E P plan changed after the budget was passed. Um, and there was additional cost to an after-school program that they're attending, and then therefore transportation. And then because of that, it resulted in two companies now have to transport this student. So one company transports him, um, three days a week, like, one direction, and then another company picks up the other direction. And then that original company does it, uh, two days a week, both directions. So it was a little complicated, um, if you will, but un- unfortunately, it resulted in, um, a savings in the budget line, but then ninety-three hundred dollars where we did not budget, and kinda same in the summertime. Of course, the summertime was, was, uh, much cheaper.
Does that parent that's transporting, uh, behavioral approach, you know, that she can apply for reimbursement?
Oh, no, we are, um, A, A B is transporting. Yeah, yeah, it's a, um, a company. Yeah. Um, so then that's the transportation. And then the last page is just really an explanation of, um, of the figures, uh, you know, I, I kinda mentioned, I think, most of this as I was going over it, but so Griswold, we had that one student at fifty-one thousand dollar tuition that was, um, was new this year. Uh, we were off one at Griswold High School. Uh, the ledger of Voag students, we, we did have one savings as a student moved out of the district. Um, but then at Lyman, with the regular ed high school student, uh, twelve thousand dollars, that was an increase that we did not have. NFA special ed, there was a five-student savings. Norwich Tech, um, I, we included this one just because there was twenty students that we did budget, but regular education, um, gained a student, especially lost a student, but we still have twenty students attending, uh, that school. And then I did go over, uh, at the lighthouse, um, with the changes to that student's, uh, transportation cost. Uh, that was a big ticket item, if you will. And again, the, um, the student who was, who was having great success at the behavior approach, appro- uh, behavior approach, but, um, again, that's a big ticket tuition. Um, and I do just wanna thank Kathy and Linda, who, uh, who helped prepare this report. Um, did a great job and, uh, made it a lot easier this year. So if there's any other questions about this, or, uh, kinda wherever we stand, happy to take any questions.
I mean, it could change. It will change.
It's up to them.
I know. It, it's gonna change. It's on the horizon, but, okay.
All right.
All right.
All right, thank you. Uh, any questions, Ms. Paradise? No? All right, LCS class size numbers, possible action.
All right, I'll start it, but, um, I have a feeling that the team will also jump in, but on your, in your numbers, where it says fifty-two for grade six, you're a, a kiddo's coming in tomorrow. So it's gonna be twenty-six in Brian's room. Okay, so now we're at fifty-three. And, um, because, uh, it is a grade level right now that is very needy, um, the students, we, we looked at the percentages, Dan and I did, and we're up to fifty percent, which, which happens, a great class, fifty percent of the kids in that room, in that class, I should say, um, are, uh, special ed or five oh four. Um, scores are, are low. Um, so the team, uh, said, geez, we got the seed money, about twenty-nine thousand, right, Dan? Yeah, um, and it is, the parameters are, as he so nicely said, aptly said, for something that's not in your budget already, something that's for special ed, something new. And putting tutors in that classroom would be, would fit the parameters.
Tutors?
Tutors. I'm sorry. Tutors. I'm sorry. Tomorrow, I'll swallow correctly, but anyway, um, yeah, so, correct, and, and they've worked out the, uh, let me look at it here. They did it, uh, with Jonathan. Uh, the tutors would come to twenty-three thousand, one hundred and forty dollars. One is for pre-K, we need some, someone there. Correct, uh, everyone? All right. So it really would come to, for grade six, fifteen thousand, four hundred dollars. That's what I calculated, is it right? You helped.
Yeah.
Yeah, fifteen thousand, four hundred. Um, so if you come out of that twenty-nine thousand, doesn't affect our budget. It's a seed grant. It's meant for this kind of thing. I mean, don't ask me why the start, everything was in alignment for this, which was shocking. Um, and I know the team feel, it, most people can, but the team feels the same way.
Yeah, and we provide, we provide five and a half hours of tutor support.
Yeah.
Per day, for fifteen K? Can we hire like forty of them? That's cheap.
So anyway, um.
Would, would that then be by subject area, not by class subject, right? Cause you only have one, and you have two really big classes.
Yeah, so we're, when, the, as I was saying, we're looking at, and we're looking at, um, providing support to both math classes, grade six, we're also looking at supporting, um, our E L A, um, as well, and also looking at, you know, the science piece too. So we're looking at how we can incorporate as much, how we can maximize the use of.
It's true, right. Cause in theory, if we had the money, we need two, because you need one.
Well, we did talk about.
For each class of twenty-six slash twenty-seven, wherever they might be, because with this, you're getting really half, right?
So you said, uh,
I'm sorry, yeah.
Sixth grade two is fifteen four?
Yeah.
So it'd be.
Cause we were using some of the money.
Thirty-one thousand plus another, how much is the pre-K?
Pre, one is seven thousand, seven hundred and forty.
So what's the total there? So thirty-one.
So you put together, it's twenty-three thousand, one forty, at least that's what I'm talking about. Yeah, I think he is. I think that's what he's doing.
So about thirty-nine K you need?
We're getting twenty-nine?
We're getting twenty-nine. Twenty-nine eight, maybe.
I know where we can save ten K, I'll talk about it.
Water heater?
Yep.
The hot heat, the water heater? No, we have to go to school. We don't have hot water. That's the risk there. I don't wanna do that. Well, um,
Well, these, these classes, these class sizes are beyond the contract.
Well, no, uh, well, okay. In fairness, uh, if you look at it, it's twenty-eight. Twenty-eight is when you sit.
About twenty-five.
Well, it, it's, it's a margin of three. Yeah. Um, and then it says you may be the union. I'm telling you, uh, Mary already came to, I think, all of us individually, which is fine. She's an advocate. There's no problem with that, to say she would like to have support help. Um, so I think she is union. I could sit with the union still, but, I mean, Mary came, it was requested, I mean, if you want me to, I can.
So I'm gonna make a motion to our two sixth grade tutors and one pre-K tutor.
Well, what they're asking, Christopher, I think, Kelly, do you need, do we need to, to make this right?
So what, what we're looking at.
I mean, that's the question on the table, right? Okay, okay.
Could we use?
Um.
I'm sorry.
Absolutely.
All right, so there's a motion on the table. I got a second. All's in favor?
Oh, oh, did you second it? Oh, no, Lauren, okay, I didn't get that. I apologize.
Aye. So we got twenty-nine K for seed money, and there's another ten K I'll talk, talk about later. I'm interested in these guys have looked at this, when they say that fifty percent of the class is either I E P or five oh four, and they have, they're already approaching the contract limits for class size.
Well, I don't mind with the need for a second tutor. I'm saying, we should establish first. It's usually that that ten thousand is there, an additional money before we.
Go ahead. Oh.
Cause I, I don't know what grade that one is, if that's the topic.
Well, we could tan.
One, like one tutor and one in the people.
And then come back, and then come back.
All right. You wanna do that, or you wanna just go?
And he's supporting, he just kinda want, you mentioned, you don't want it to come from somewhere, then you should put it where, that, where it's at.
Can it come from?
Well, we, we put ten thousand dollars in the board of education account for a search, that we might not have to do. Well, I'm just saying, there's ten K right there. He asked me where it's coming from.
I know, but I'm saying, we should put the motion on the table when we don't have that notified.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Okay, wait a minute. One, two, three, four.
Did you second it? Yeah.
Wait, one, two, three, four. Oh, no, five. Can we do it one more time? I'm, I'm sure I have it right. One, two, three, four, five.
Three tutors.
I thought it was two tutors.
I mean, I, I think, in all honesty, this is something we need to do to support them, and we need to find a way to find the money. That's a lot of kids in those classes. I, I think the number of student, the ratio of students to teachers makes a huge difference, and.
Especially considering that they're not all.
Exactly, that they're, fifty percent of them have I E Ps. Was that grade group. I think it's something we need to find money for. I think her.
Yeah. Yeah, you got.
Yeah, we got.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure.
Just the motion passes.
Yeah, okay.
All right.
You didn't do, you didn't do all the motion, all the, do.
Um, I don't know what they did.
I said, all those in favor, I got five. All those opposed. Opposed, show these.
No, oh, okay.
All right, abstaining?
I'm, I know, I'm, I'm not, I'm abstaining, cause I'm not.
One abstaining. That's okay, so one, there's nothing wrong with it, Kate. So one abstaining, what about you? Abstain.
Okay, that's.
All right. Gotcha. Now, do I do that right? So one, two, three, four. Yeah, yeah, okay. Yeah, I did, I just, I just tallied it off.
All right, moving on. Is that all you needed?
Wait a minute, what's, just, sorry.
Oh, you have another question? We'll find the money.
Oh, we'll find it. Don't worry.
We'll find the money. We have to find it.
Because maybe this is something we.
Yeah, that's what.
Maybe we can add this, uh, on next month's agenda, that we review and make sure that everything's in align.
Yeah, maybe Jonathan, bring us the money, Jonathan.
Okay. Well, we can do that.
All right, transportation and technical high schools.
Oh, sure, or whatever you want.
Well, so, uh, so last, last time, last month, when we met, we're discussing technical, uh, transportation tech schools, uh, we talked about the Griswold, uh, potential. But, uh, there, uh, some of the board members wanted to see the actual, uh, statute that reference how, um, families can be entitled up to six thousand dollars rebate, um, should they provide their own trans- their own transportation. So, uh, Sal and I had a phone call with, uh, Attorney Ritter, and we asked her to really, very clearly, put it all in writing, so everyone can see it and be satisfied. So, um, it really boils down to, uh, a reasonable and a necessary transportation. So the master and the districts must spend a six thousand dollars per student. Parents who disagree with the district's reasonable and necessary transportation have a right to a hearing. So if there was ever a family, um, that provided their own transportation, and they, uh, wanted to, if they received this reimbursement, they would be entitled to a hearing, which we would obviously hold for them to go, hear them out, and explain the decision one way or the other as to whether or not they would be entitled to a potential reimbursement.
If it's a stroll in it, door-to-door, build that requirement.
I'm gonna jump to that one in two, two, no, 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 it's.
Yeah, go ahead.
Oh.
This was, or, cause I wouldn't.
Oh, wow.
Yep. Yep.
Um, this was transportation to Texas.
Correct, yeah.
Any, um.
Any exception, yeah. Um, so any challenge would need to be addressed on an individual basis. Um, but the district should make the parents asserting any such challenge aware that the district is only required to pay up to six thousand dollars, um, which we did discuss last month, um, to transfer that student to a, uh, and then once the money is spent, the parents are obligated for the remaining balance of that transportation. So if this family did do it for the entire year, and based on mileage, uh, and days of school, once they hit that six thousand dollar threshold, um, the school would know, the district would no longer be responsible, the family would just pay, pay for the rest. Um, and we did discuss in the, in the case of the Griswold matter that we sort of presented, but I know it's not happening anymore, but since the district would have been paying two thousand per child, um, to Griswold, that family, Dan would only have been entitled to the remaining four thousand dollar balance, cause the district already spent two thousand dollars. Um, but where the biggest, um, conversation came was the door-to-door transportation, which, uh, Attorney Ritter, uh, felt the district has, um, a very clear route in winning any, uh, challenge, if you will, or at any hearing, if a family stated that they had door-to-door transportation. If the family tried to make the statement that that was not reasonable and not necessary, that we would prevail in any hearing, um, that would come out of, you know, kinda such, such a matter, so. So from the door-to-door, we are good, if you will, as far as not needing to budget, this is how we kinda discussed, you know, how would we budget for all these? Yes, yes.
On you.
Um, and then the second page of our email was the actual statute, um, so we do have it here. Um, and I hope this answers kind of the tech school, um, transportation matter, but, but if, uh, anyone still has any questions, or I didn't say that well enough, I'm happy to answer any other questions.
It'd be fine.
No, you agree, yeah. No problem with it.
Any questions? All right, early start preschool topics.
Uh, we tabled this, this meeting, cause Dan wasn't at, uh, for good reason, wasn't at the last meeting. Um, do you wanna leave it? When do you wanna do Dan?
Yeah, I can just, I can give a, just a, uh, update on what's happening now in the world of early childhood and the, uh, as it pertains to the local governance partnership. Um, so they created a name, um, the name is, uh, R E C C, which stands for the Regional Early Childhood Collaborative. Um, they've got, gone as far as to develop a logo and everything about that, um, so that's up and running as far as that's concerned. Um, with the parent ambassador committee, so far, two parents have, have signed up, um, one from Griswold and one from Norwich. Um, just saying that it'd be helpful to have a few more, um, members. They plan on meeting virtually throughout the, um, month of October, a couple of times a month. And they're c- uh, currently establishing the community table, and, um, they're gonna be, uh, meetings held on Wednesdays of each month at nine AM, uh, starting in November. If anybody's, I mean, all the information is on here, so, um, and then, um, the Learn, as our fiduciary, is now in their final stages of, um, of, uh, signing the contract with Shine. Um, so that is, uh, that is almost done. It's in the final stages, like I said, and, um, should be getting more updates on that in the future. Um, any questions?
How can, how can parents sign up if they want more on that panel? How can we do that?
Um, so you can, you can come to me directly, and I can put you in touch with some of the, um, the, we, we have, uh, Linda at Learn, so she, I could get you in touch with her, and you can sign up to do that. Yeah, or.
Okay.
I have something that we can put out in the newsletter?
Yeah, we could just put something.
Yep.
And we have a meeting November fourth, I think. November fourth? Yeah, I can mention something there. I'm gonna go to that one.
And I think they're going to have a website. Well, that, there's gonna be a website for the LGD.
Yeah, they're gonna develop a website too, so that people, if they're interested out in the community, they can, they can, um, go on the website and sign up also.
Like our site will link to, or, I mean, our website.
No.
Not yet.
No. Oh, no, no.
Yes, that's, yes, we should, I.
No, he can do that.
Yeah, I can definitely do that.
Or Christopher, I can do it.
And then lastly, the.
And then lastly, the, uh, needs assessment that we've all been kind of wondering about, is, um, is set to come out late winter, early spring. Um, so that data should be, um, processed and by, hoping by the start of next year, we can kind of make some decisions based on our program, um, with that data.
Okay.
All right?
Yep, you're good.
I already got you down.
No, I got them.
All right, any questions? Thank you. Uh, so the last agenda item, item H, um, we're going to, I need a motion to move it till after, uh, item fourteen?
Yeah, yep.
Who made the motion? Joe, second, Karen, all's in favor?
Aye.
All right, all right, committee reports, do we have any committee reports? No. Additions to this agenda, anybody, anybody want to talk about anything else?
You need to tell the committee report for the superintendent search, if you want to discuss things later. We need to be minutes, basically, recap.
So, uh,
Oh, okay.
Superintendent Search Committee, we met one time on October eighth. Uh, we discussed, it was, there's supposed to be four members, there were only three of us there, Judy, Joe, myself. We discussed, uh, trying to quantify what our current superintendent's job is, and what it would take to replace her. Um, we, in terms of hours, what we have to hire, part-time, full-time. We would hold through the entire lit, litany of stuff. Um, and then, uh, and then, um, I mentioned that, uh, Ms. Keating has, uh, offered to sign another two-year contract. It would take her out to June of twenty-eight, and, um, we said that we would bring it to the board. So we suspended the committee, subcommittee, and here we are. So, um, Judy did not want to vote, take any action on her contract until November, because she's not gonna be here tonight. So that's where, so we'll discuss it in November, all right? But think about it. All right, um. Oh, she did not meet today.
You have to reschedule that meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Two members couldn't call.
Yeah.
And we are down a member now, so if anybody wants to jump on the bandwagon, join us.
Hi, David.
Dave? Come on, Dave.
But we do have.
Summer's over, man.
We do vote even, so it kind of does relieve us a little bit, because now we can use Jody. I know, so that is not, but it's not an excuse if anybody wants to join, we're really fun.
Um, while we're sort of on this same topic, though, um, with now not having treasurer for the board then, um, we're gonna have a large A P run in two weeks, yet need a signature.
Who, who did it before, when Randy couldn't make it?
Judy.
Was it Judy?
That, that form has Dan's name on it, so you can, you can sign that right there.
Get writer's cramp after a little while.
I can do it in the interim until we can re-sback, we have a full board, and we can vote someone in.
You know somebody's been, uh, vetted through Dime, right? Dime Bank and all that?
Oh, we do?
Well, to, to replace a treasurer, yes.
No, I mean, it, it, it's true.
Well, I'm just wondering, I guess we just need to determine, look into it maybe, then what is the policy, which you cannot do, because if it is simple, if it is just your, your signature. I can get a digital copy, we can add it, and we can make it work, I just, we just sort of need a plan, because we're gonna, we have a lot of checks to go.
I think I'm already signed up with Dime Bank, though, too.
I thought he was the next one.
We'll check it out.
But I'm.
I'll sign that.
I think you can, yeah, I think you can at least sign that, uh, that, that's for sure. Um, so maybe we can confirm that, though.
Sure.
Okay.
Yep. I'll free them.
Okay.
We can talk tomorrow.
Yeah, 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 okay.
All right, any other committee reports? Jonathan, you got any else? No, you're good?
No.
You're good. Additions to this agenda?
Oh, that's right, yeah, yeah, right, right.
No additions, all right, good, anything we want to add to next month's agenda? Tutor, yep, so you're gonna find us the money, right, tutor money?
And, and treasurer.
Tutor money.
I don't either, I really don't.
And treasurer position, right?
I'm gonna throw one out there, any, any ideas in the years from other schools of any kind of motivation for more, uh, effort on S back, back up the test, I don't know, anybody, how many schools do it and cover it up?
I heard it's, yeah.
S back incentives?
Yeah.
That have rallies and they do something like that.
We can try something weird, recognize, if, if it's done very well.
And we're gonna do that, oh, put that on, we have to do the S back, yeah, thank you.
I think, I think doing it here is nice, but I think when you do your try investor thingy, that's not a bad place to point that out, too, if you're really good.
We used to do assemblies, that was under Bob Austin.
Yeah, but you've got your trying, you're gonna.
Yeah, yeah, but they were a lot more like rah rah, kind of like cut rallies.
Yeah, I was gonna say, that might be like your pepper rally.
It was, yeah.
That would be nice to pump them up, like that.
We'd be going back to that, too.
Pump them up and it's go test. Pump them up, get them.
Yeah. And calm down.
Got you all hyped up?
Yeah.
Be quiet.
Yeah. Anyway, okay, sorry.
Is that it?
Yeah, oh, yeah, so far, yeah.
Uh, did you put treasurer on?
I did, yeah. Anything else? Policy?
Yeah, policy.
Where am I going?
Sorry.
Too early, but she was also a member of the finance committee of the budget segment.
Yeah.
And maybe that's a December thing, because.
Well, when we, when we have elections.
Cause you gotta redo committees in November.
Right, okay, yeah.
So, yeah.
Okay, yep.
Sometimes they change.
We might just, we, maybe we should just leave that policy position open. Until that's a, elects, elections.
Yes, it's fine.
No, like I said, no, oh, wait a minute. Oh.
We've been.
You're getting, you're getting tired of the, it's tou, it's tough committee. It's a lot of work.
It is a lot.
It really is. Probably, probably. A lot of people don't like it, but, I mean, it's not their thing, you know, it, it's a lot of work. It really is. That's nice, thank you. Oh, team. Yeah, right, yeah. Oh, not Ian. Yeah, and if, I, I got one from Learn already.
All right, so, I don't want to be real, this. Uh, any public comment? No, we good? All right, so the meeting, uh, we're gonna go into executive session and invite in Ms. Keating. So everybody else can leave, except for the board member. What's that? Yeah, I will, but I want to get rid of.
Oh, Kathy.
So any motion going to executive session? Second, all's in favor?